Thank you. Welcome to the very first board meeting of the school year. And we are recognizing that the Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the first people of the Hunkamunum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. And I want to welcome our visitors to the gallery and on those that are online. And also, I'm excited to introduce our new, soon to be not new superintendent, who has come to us by way of and now which is truly the best place to live and learn and lead. So we welcome Mr. Yusey to our district and we're very excited. Some fresh eyes in the district. And he's already shared some fresh ideas. Wonderful to have. We have some announcements. I believe trustees have some announcements for us. Trustee Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Worst Teacher Day is held annually on October 5th to celebrate all teachers around the goal. The theme of Worst Teachers' Day 2023 is the teachers we need for the education we want. The global imperative for the worst teacher shortage. The 2023 celebrations will aim to put the importance of stopping the decline in the numbers of teachers and then starting to increase that numbers at the top of the global agenda. The Richmond Board of Education would like to express their gratitude to all teachers who contributes to making the Richmond School District the best place to learn and lead. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do welcome back all our teachers and staff and especially our students. And I, we, the board does acknowledge World Teachers' Day on social media and I thought that website with our Director of Communications we work with. Our Director of Communications to recognize our teachers. Thank you. Trustee Yang.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. October is Foster Family Month in B.C., which marks the 33rd year of celebrating the individuals and families who opened their homes to children and youth in care in B.C. These caregivers work hard to ensure that the young people in their care are provided with a safe and healthy home and are cared for and nurtured through some of the most difficult and formative years of their lives. Right now, more than 1,000 children and youth around B.C. need temporary foster families. So anyone who is interested in becoming a foster parent is encouraged to go to the website at fosteringconnections.ca for more information. A big thank you to all Richmond foster families.
Thank you.
And trustee sergeant? Thank you very much. Literacy Month, celebrated in September in B.C., increases awareness of the importance of literacy and raises funds to support community-based literacy programs and initiatives across British Columbia. Literacy provides opportunities for all of us to make a substantial contribution to the education, growth, and prosperity of Canada. Beyond reading and writing, literacy allows us to understand, critically analyze, and create a variety of forms of communication. As a foundation of our society, it is crucial to thriving as individual and communities. The 2023 theme for Literacy Month is "Literacy connects us." Literacy in its many forms connects us to self, unity, and opportunity. We encourage everyone to connect and celebrate literacy each and every day in their school, home, and community.
And trustee Larson?
Thank you. September 30th is the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. This statutory holiday allows us the opportunity to reflect on the truth and reconciliation commissions, findings, and resulting calls to action. We encourage all in our community to reflect on the findings of the commission and to read the 94 Calls to Action. Orange Shirt Day acknowledged in our schools on September 29th began in Williams Lake, B.C. in 2013, honoring the indigenous children who were sent away to residential schools in Canada. It has become a national movement to recognize the survivors of residential schools, honor them, and show a collective commitment to ensure that every child matters. Acknowledged every year at the end of September, Orange Shirt Day opens the door to conversations on all aspects of residential schools and is an opportunity to create meaningful discussion about the effects of residential schools and the legacy they've left behind. The Richmond Board of Education is committed to reconciliation and invites all members of our school communities to participate in Orange Shirt Day and take time to reflect on the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation on September 30th. Thank you.
And in recognition of Truth and Reconciliation Day, we are all wearing our orange shirts. And we'll be wearing them once again through the week, I'm sure. So I think we could look quite colorful and orange. I love it. Madam Secretary Treasurer, are there any materials that are not included in the package?
Thank you, Chairperson. All materials are included in the board meeting package and published on the district's website. Thank you.
Okay, an adoption of the agenda. Don't believe there's anything to add. Is there anything?
I'll move.
You move agenda? Okay. And seconded by trustee Belisa. All those in favor? Thank you. No one opposed? Motion's carried. Presentations, briefs, and special recognitions. We don't have any presentations, but we do have briefs from our President of Richmond Teachers Association, Ms. Baberstock. And thank you for bringing those.
Okay. Fabulous. So thank you very much. And I guess I start the year with brief, briefs, but two of them. So Liz Baberstock, President, Richmond Teachers Association, and happy to be here. And thank you for your work. I want to say special thanks for your acknowledgement of truth and reconciliation and October 5th, World Teachers' Day. And I really like the theme, "The teachers we need, the teachers we want." I think that will resonate even as you look at other things in your agenda tonight. So I have two briefs. The very first one, really, it is the Richmond Soji Statement of Support. And I, and this is really just to say thank you. And I want to thank you for your prompt response and your action and to all the stakeholders who joined. All of us to stand together for safe and inclusive schools. And I want to say that we all remain distressed by acts of vandalism and hate. And I am really pleased that we do stand together and want to say thank you for the letter and how quickly we all worked together on that.
Was people that signed the document? And it was a joint statement between all of us? And which included QP and the District Parents Association, yourselves, Richmond Teachers Association, and the Richmond Management and Professional Staff among trustees and the Board of Education. So thank you.
Thank you.
And we were happy to be called very clearly in response to some of the actions across Canada and in our own community. With our pride crosswalks and flags, some of the vandalism and messages that were written on those crosswalks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did trustee Sam any questions or remarks?
Okay, so my second brief is on the annual Foundation Skills Assessment. I think I've, I've sent a couple of these letters each year expressing our concerns about protection of data, timing of exam, and the length of the exam. So we are actually asking that you rejoin our campaign to protect the FSA data really from the misuse by third parties to rank schools. We have taken a different tactic this year. And what we're doing is we're really focusing on an advertising campaign that is within Richmond News, and we are working with our stakeholder partners as appropriate to get our message out. And that is to join the campaign to contact MLAs and ask for this data to also making meaning it is October. This is a really important month of building community in schools. September is a very busy month, but really, October is the month that you actually get grounded as a community and you can start to build on those things. These tests can take up to six hours to write, which is a lot of time that could be better spent supporting students. And so I think they could be shortened if that, if it's important to get the data. And I don't necessarily disagree with that if that, that data is protected. System-wide checks after, you know, grade three, after primary, and in intermediate. Do understand that. But I do think we actually should be working together and continue to work together to protect the data. So what, if you actually take a look at what students have to students? What's interesting is just the number of multiple choice for a grade four student, right? Thirty and thirty. That's a lot of multiple choice questions. So I think those are some things that I would love to see some changes. If this, if this needs to continue, the data needs to protected, timing needs to be looked at, and the length of the exam. So that is why I speak to you tonight. I'm asking you to join the campaign. There's a couple of, you know, it's us advertising, but there are a couple of brochures that were attached to our letter. This has got the QR code. It takes people to an easy place where they can email MLAs. It'll naturally fill in based on where you live to the appropriate MLA to ask them to protect the data. And you've done this in the past. We've, you've written letters and I know you've joined with B.C. School Trustee Association to make those requests. I think we have to keep doing it. I wish we didn't, but we do. The other request that is in here, and I just leave you with that, is we've changed our, we've altered our campaign. You know, when parents come forward this year, it will generally be because they have engaged with the campaign through media. And I think that if they're doing that and they're sending in the letters, they will have printed them up, they will have signed them, and they will be submitting them. And I think respecting that voice that comes forward, for whatever reason it is, on why they feel very committed to having their child not write the test. So I leave that with you for your consideration. So thank you for listening.
Trustees have any questions? Trustee Yang.
Thank you, Chairperson. And thank you, Ms. Baberstock, for your brief. I'm just curious to, as to, I know the issue of FSA is persistent for quite some time, but I'm not sure if you're able to share some of the conversations you've been hearing from your members about the FSA this time around, this year? Were there any same, different concerns? Or we had some parent representatives here as well to ask?
The concerns continue. So teachers are concerned. They have found, you know, the last couple of years where there's been increased pressure to have parents write. So parents have turned in their opt-out form, but there's been a lot of pressure to have them write. They found that very frustrating. It's, it creates division. It creates conflict for, for parents and families and caregivers, and they feel that. So I think that is really the difference that I would say. And that is actually one of the reasons why we've altered our campaign is because it was creating conflict with the pushback. That hadn't happened before. It has happened for the past couple of years, and that has come from the Ministry of Education. I totally understand that. But it has made it hard. And so that, that impacts teachers because they want to support families, they want to support the students, and they want to, they want to take the time to teach. So even though we've altered our campaign, our concerns remain.
Thank you for sharing that. And I just think, you know, I, I share the concerns that you and others of the public have regards to the FSA. I think it's quite demeaning to reduce public education and our schools to a bus speed type list. I think that's a very inappropriate use of that data. But I think this worthy's further conversation on how to find a better path forward for our students, for the education sector, because, you know, it serves a purpose, but, you know, there, there, there needs to be some changes in my view. So happy to continue that conversation.
Yeah. Trustee Sergeant?
Yeah, thanks very much. You know, for me, this is a bit of a dilemma. You know, it is the tool that is being used at the time. And I think it is very important for the public to know how the system's doing and for us to look at it as a snapshot of data. I think it's important to have that is another question, but I think there, there needs to be a tool to measure how we're all doing. And I know I was part of a campaign last year, or at least highly about the importance of collecting as much data as we can to show that there are students in our communities that are not doing well, and we need to pay attention. And so it's definitely a dilemma. I know, I don't want to speak for teachers, but I know they care as well. And so all the partners came together and said, we, we know that's important. And I feel like I have to say that tonight, that FNS is really wanting a vibrant tool and for people to use the tools that they can gather the appropriate. Because it's easy just to discount. So I understand, you know, the, the change in campaign. And I hope maybe the opt-out, maybe we need to have more discussions with our families around the tool. And with, how many years have we been talking about the ranking? Highly inappropriate. Not, it's not a measure of what's a good school, what's a good teacher. We know that. So I'm definitely in support of that for the data not to be used. But I think we are confusing people a bit too. So just wanted to, to say that I really care about FNS and what they're trying to do.
Right, and I understand that. And I think that when, because the issue of data and the access by 30 parties into ranked schools, that creates the opt-out campaign. So, you know, if we could actually get to that, then we actually probably could have richer data. Thank you.
And I just had myself on the list because I do think, you know, trustees have been concerned along with our for a long time. I, every annual general meeting for B.C. School Trustees Association, there's more than one motion on FSAs. And the ranking of schools has caused so much trouble. And it's, it really is not appropriate. And yet, families do turn to it all the time. And the timing, you know, just into the school year is probably very problematic. So yeah, we, you know, we do sympathize, but there, there are, I mean, FSAs do supply some good data, but there are other ways to collect data too, and better ways. So yeah, I really think it needs to be thought about, but I'm looking for someone to refer as per our usual process, refer this brief to our staff for discussion. Trustee Yang moves. Is there a second or two? Trustee Larson? Trustee Belisa, do you have a?
I'm supposed to second, but
Oh, you were seconding, sorry. Okay, I already go. Okay, but you can put your hand up again because that's the question. All those in favor? And opposed, so the motion's carried. Moving on, this is also the time for questions from the public. If we have any questions from the public? I don't see any, so we'll move on. And our superintendent, Mr. Chris Yusey, is going to share some highlights of his beginning weeks with the school districts. So
Well, thank you very much, Chair Tablockney and the entire Board of Education. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to serve as Superintendent of Schools for the Richmond School District. As this is my first public board meeting as Superintendent of Schools, I'd like to share my initial reactions with the board and members of the public. First of all, let me begin by thanking staff, students, and families for their cooperation. The school year is off to a great start across our district, and there is so much to celebrate within the Richmond School District. Since joining the district in late August, I have witnessed firsthand the dedication of staff throughout our system. Richmond is a high-performance school district because we have staff who care deeply and who want the best for our students. And I see that daily. Regardless of their role in the system, whether they work in schools or they work in central departments, every employee contributes to student success. I'm indeed grateful to our staff for their commitment to students and families in our, in school communities across our system. Getting to know the people in our district is, is a priority for me. I'm pleased to share that I have visited to date 30 schools in our system. I continue to engage with staff in schools and at different, and at different work sites, including the school board office, facility services there with me. Facility Services Center, the District Resource Center, our Adult Learning Center, and also alternative programs in our system. Staff are connected to our mission, vision, and values, and that connection is through our strategic, the board-approved strategic plan. I've spent quite a bit of time with that plan, and I'm proud to be in a system that is forward-thinking and that is committed to success for each and every student in this district without exception. I look forward to collaborating with the Board of Education, with staff, students, and partner groups in furtherance of our strategic plan. A strategic plan guides our work as a district. I think it's important to highlight different components of the five strategic priorities at future board meetings, and I look forward to doing so on a go-forward basis. And I know you're, everyone is familiar with those five priorities, but I think it's important for us to keep reminding ourselves what they are. Inspired learners, equity and inclusion, optimized facilities and technology, a progressive workplace, and a connected learning community where everyone belongs. I'd like to highlight, and trustee Larson mentioned that earlier in our announcements, a significant, significant event taking place in our school communities and across the country this week, and I think we all know. Many of us in this room and those in our schools and workplaces this week are wearing orange shirts in recognition of National, the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, which of course we know is on September 30th today. This day, according to the Government of Canada, is, I quote, "a commemoration of the tragic and painful history and ongoing impacts of residential schools." And I think we are all committed to a better future and to creating a better society for our young people and for generations to come. Last Friday, September 22nd, was a non-instructional day here in our district. And staff across the district engaged in full-day professional learning, headlined by keynote speaker and Indigenous scholar Dr. Dustin Louie. We recognize the importance of this shared commitment in our schools and our workplaces, and we're committed to learning and to getting better each day. Together with open hearts and kindness, we will create a more inclusive society where everyone belongs. Indeed, every child matters. Before I close, I just wanted to mention again that the commitment that we bring daily to our work as a learning organization is one that I'm most proud of. While the Richmond School District is a high-performance district, and I think the results indicate that we are at or above provincial levels in most categories, we also recognize that as a learning organization, we must ask ourselves questions about the, the students in our system, how well they're doing. In the spirit of continuous improvement, we'll never get to a place where we say, well, we're good enough. That is a work that we continue to do. And I know our board is committed to that work based on the conversations we've had to date. And I'm very happy to be part of that, to be along that journey as we work diligently to see students learn in a place of joy with dedicated staff and commitment to real intentional focus in our system so that each and every student experience success within the Richmond School District. So thank you very much, and I look forward to that, to the exciting journey that we have ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees have any questions at all? We're moving on. Approval of the minutes of prior meetings. Record of an in-camera meeting of the board held, board meeting held Wednesday, June 21st, 2003. Without seeing cameras, sorry. The regular meeting of the board held Wednesday, June 21st are here for approval, and I'm looking for a move or in a second. Trustee Sergeant and trustee Wong. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? No one opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. And business arising from prior minutes. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to talk about our board advocacy because in June, and it was relatively late. I believe it was kind of late in June, but the board did visit the, make a presentation to the Select Standing Committee on Finance. And we talked about our key priorities. We talked to the committee on, about capital funding and a request to ease the, the enrollment growth in Richmond Center, City Center. And we presented, you know, some of our staggering numbers, growth was 15.2%. And we had a significant increase in deployment of eight portables to accommodate the resulting 215-seat shortfall in City Center. And deployment of eight portables to accommodate the resulting two hundred and fifteen seat shortfall in City Center and that the official community plan projected a substantial population growth in City Center from forty thousand in two thousand sixteen to an estimated ninety thousand in two thousand thirty-one. And that to meet the demands of this growth in our, our district's five-year capital plan, we submitted for funding approval and included in the plans for twenty-three additional classrooms in, in the existing schools and development of two elementary schools in City Center. So, we really stress the importance, importance of what's going on with our City Center and we met with actually some good feedback and good questions. And in the recommendations, there was recommendations to actually fast track funding for City Center enrollment pressures for us and other school districts as well that are suffering from enrollment pressures. We also talked about the request for capital funding. That we noted that we currently have sixteen elementary schools and four secondary schools in the district that remain unsupported. And since that presentation, we've received more funding for, I believe it's two more schools. Have been approved. So, we're moving ahead quite well and appreciated of that. And we asked for sustainable fundings for ministry initiatives. The K to twelve anti-racism plan and childcare and early learning initiatives. And the student family affordability, affordability funding. So, we have received some funding for those items as well. And if the report is included. I remember it's, it's in our, well, I believe it's on the website. Is that right? So, if you get a chance to read the report, our advocacy did not fall on deaf ears and there were recommendations and referrals in several paragraphs referring to district thirty-eight. So, we made an impact and that was a, a report that was once again a joint report and presentation. So, I want to thank everybody that participated in that and also wanted to talk about a little bit about our DC School Trustees advocacy day and chairs to go over to Victoria on September nineteenth. And we will spend the day advocating for our districts and speaking to our own MLAs along with others across the province and cabinet ministers. And so, I will be there. And advocating for our district once again. And all our presentations, including the one to the Select Standing Commitment Committee is on our website and along with our advocacy letters. So, we will continue working with our education partners, advocating for students of Richmond. Thank you. And I will report back at the next meeting about the advocacy day and how it went because it's the first ever. Think it'll be, it's going to be interesting, I think. Thank you very much. Moving on. Our annual strategic plan report to the board. And we have our deputy superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, chairperson. It's wonderful to see the board from this position. So, I'm pleased to speak to the strategic plan annual report this evening. This report is located on page forty-two of your board package. As you will have seen in the public board package, the report is comprehensive. Primarily in accounting of the work of staff looking back to last school year. Complemented with four, with a forward-looking focus into this school year. As a reminder, in May of last school year, the board hosted its annual partner group dinner where senior staff presented a number of the achievements in relationship to the strategic plan. Also in June, the board received an annual year-end celebration presentation from senior staff. In both meetings, the feedback was welcomed to guide adjustments to the plan where warranted. The purpose of this report is to provide trustees with an annual update during the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year and to outline upcoming areas of focus. A little bit about the structure of the report, which is in two parts. And that is progress made during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. In that location, the report addresses each strategic priority in order. Goals and objectives which were scheduled to be addressed in the operational plans during last school year. And a brief summary of, of progress made within each objective is provided. All in all, progress on objectives included approximately a hundred and fifty key actions across five strategic priorities. Approximately a hundred were single-year focused and fifty were multi-year focused. A hundred and thirty key actions were completed. Fifteen remain in progress and five were delayed for various reasons. Areas for focus for the upcoming school year, these sections sit side by side. And each goal area and objective that is part of the operational plan for twenty-three, twenty-four school year is identified in this section. As outlined in policy one oh one dash R, the board will receive ongoing in-depth updates on progress throughout the school year specifically through quarterly reports to the board in public. The following tentative schedule for this school year includes in December, strategic priority one, inspired learners, followed by strategic priority two, equity and inclusion. In March, we anticipate bringing to the board strategic priority three, optimized facilities and technology. Strategic priority four, a progressive workplace. And in June, strategic priority five, a connected learning community. So, in conclusion, the vast majority of the action, actions scheduled for completion during the past school year were achieved. And the district through the work of every school and district-based employee is making excellent progress on the board's strategic priorities. With that, I conclude my report. If you have any questions, happy to field those and likely direct them to the owners of each priority. Thank you very much.
Trustee Sergeant?
Yeah, thank you very much. Well, I really feel like I'm really up to date on our strategic plan. And I think that makes me very happy knowing that we did all this work with our community to develop a strategic plan, but that we didn't let it just sit on the shelf. And I think staff has done a fabulous job of making sure that you report out to us quarterly. And I appreciate this report as well, which I've gone through. But one thing I'm wondering about is we did a report to the community or a, I guess, a, a small booklet of our strat plan out to the community. And I'm wondering with this report, since it's an annual report, if we could do like a one cheater and executive summary or something like that, that we could put up on our website and, and do social with it. And then you can go further into the, because it is a large report. And some people might just gloss over it. And I think it's really important, you know, just what you just said now. So, just a suggestion, maybe a one or two executive summary for our public might be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I certainly would take that away. And I'm looking at our director of communications who's wide-eyed right now and thinking, hmm, what a great idea. Thank you.
Trustee Yang?
Thank you very much, chairperson. And as always, thank you to staff for updating us on the progress of our very important strategic plans. And our priorities. This question actually stems from a question I asked in, back in June when we had an update on priority three. I'm wondering if staff can provide some updates as to our, the video surveillance project that, that's underway. I believe that we were installing them at high schools. And so, I just, some back, more background information on how that's been going. And as I understand, we also have policy with respect to surveillance on school property. So, just to make sure that. Yes. Align with, with.
For that question, and I will ask Executive Director Lang to comment on your question. Thank you.
Good evening. To respond to that question, trustee Yang, we are currently in the midst of a request for proposal for a video surveillance system, an entire project. Funding has been provided by the board to initiate and launch that project. It was approved by a previous. There's been some delay in executing with that project. So, an entire request for proposal has gone out to public tender. We are just in the final stages of that. Currently, we have not executed the installation of any video surveillance systems that previously had some partial systems that are currently still in operation. And as part of the request for proposal, there was a second stage, which was a proof of concept. So, currently we had, we have four different vendors who are part of our RFP process. And we are just finishing the evaluation based on the proof of concept for those. Back in two thousand nineteen, I believe it was, there was some updates on the board policy in regards to video surveillance. Technology has continued to change as has all of the different applications connected to, to video surveillance. So, for the most part, our policy is very strong and stable in terms of freedom of information and protection and privacy. There's specific language within that to speak to who has access to video surveillance data, how that data needs to be handled. If that data is to be moved on to any additional parties, what forms and documentation needs to be completed as well as information around access logs and who, kind of our internal tracking mechanisms for that data. So, for the most part, our policy is very strong. Things that we will bring forward for further discussion, but most of those are very minor little adjustments. For example, rather than having a paper-based form that needs to be completed and putting video surveillance on a little USB disc of being able to adjust it to be able to create secure links and examples like that.
And just to follow up, if I may, chairperson, I appreciate that. And as a member of the policy committee, I'm sure that I very like to see, very much like to see practice lining up with policy. That's always the gold standard. And then just on the scope of our surveillance, are we talking about the entire perimeter of a high school or front entrance or how much surveillance?
Yeah, it's a great question. And part of that will depend on the budget that we have. So, once we finalize the RFP process and we can assess the, the, the funds that we have will ultimately guide the number of cameras and the number of sites that we are able to equip with adequate video surveillance. The primary focus is going to be external. So, cover around the perimeter of our school. We continue to experience and deal with some challenges regarding graffiti and acts of vandalism and other pieces. So, we very much are going to focus on the perimeter of the school, and that's for the secondary schools is our first phase of our priority. In addition to some cameras in some central large gatherings areas within the school. The policy is very clear on where cameras can and cannot be placed in terms of sensitive areas within the school. Right now, based on some of the scopes, I would say on the average secondary school, we're looking at approximately fifteen cameras. Some of the larger schools may have a few more, some of the smaller schools may have a few less. But the first phase with the funds that we have right now, our goal is to complete all ten secondary schools. And then at that point, potentially if we had additional funds, we could extend that, sorry, additional funds remaining in our current budget, we could extend that. And likely after that first stage, there would be a request that may come back to the board, looking for some additional funds to expand the project to our elementary schools.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Larson?
Just a quick one. Thank you for that explanation on the depth of the information that's required as opposed to just putting up cameras. That the freedom of, how would the information, who it can go to? I can't even imagine what that, the depth that, that you've had to go through and with the RFP and that will come back and everything like that. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Pleasure. There's, there's very clear, clear language of what we must make sure that we uphold for the safety and security of our staff and our students and any community members who are on our sites. So, we are being very specific with making sure that we are in alignment with that.
Trustee Belisa?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for this very comprehensive report. And in, I brought a strategic priority number four, areas of focus, especially in goal six. Following the initial enterprise risk assess, assessment, establishment of the enterprise risk management policy. We know that one of the recommended tasks to be done for the board is to amend the code of conduct. I wish that not only the board, but also all the staff to have this kind of code of conduct. Especially on the bridge of the data and information based on Public Interest Disclosure Act. So, if we could look into that, make sure that the fear or the concern of data breach, including if we say, for example, could be well addressed in our policy and our focus in order that we can manage the risk of the district. Thank you.
Any more questions? Well, thank you for the report. I think it's, you know, very interesting. It's been an interesting process right from the get-go with the strategic plan. And it's just so it's been such a good process to, you know, see the level of engagement across the district and the updates and the refreshing and adding and to see that students are at it all the way through, including student voice, which is so important. So, we look forward to having more conversations with our students. I know the board is just waiting with anticipation to do that. But thank you very much for the presentation. We look forward to the, the new recommendations and an update. So, thank you very much. And I just wanted to, I think I had a little brain gap there when I was referring to the, to the report that the Finance Committee, it, it was, it is in the package. And there is an executive summary and then the recommendations for K to twelve education system are at the end of the report. And so, it's very much worth reading. I just wanted to mention that. And move on to new business, summer learning highlights. And our district administrator of continuing education, Mr. Higo. Thank you. Mercy is so long ago now that it's raining.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure this evening to present the summer learning report along with Jason Higo, District Administrator for Continuing Education. And tonight, we're going to share some highlights about And tonight, we're going to share some highlights about this year's summer learning program. And the report is on page ninety-four of your package this evening. That the slides advanced. Someone will help me do that. Education is a department within the district that well as in the summer. And you can see some examples of those programs on the slides. Classroom-based full-credit programs, blended learning Mandarin language programs for youth and children, our REAP Education Assistant Program and School Age Student Summer Programs. With all with a goal of offering our program of summer learning programs align with the board's first two strategic priorities specifically to provide welcoming and engaging school environments where all can thrive and to support all learners so they may successfully complete their education with a sense of dignity, purpose, and options. And now over to District Administrator Hego to provide some highlights.
Great. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Browningham. And good evening, Superintendent Yusei, Board of Education Trustees and members of the executive team. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to just celebrate and announce that to start that our Summer Learning two thousand and twenty-three actually experienced the largest registrations to date at over fifty-eight hundred student registrations. I'm very pleased about that as well. We've seen our largest number of students with diverse abilities and disabilities also register with a hundred and fifty-eight students of low incidence in the categories that you see on the slide. Have a wonderful team of classroom teachers, resource teachers, EAs, as well as the counselor, hearing envisioned teachers, as well as members of the Coastal Vancouver Coastal Health Team that supported and helped deliver and support so that they have a successful and safe summer experience. I'd like to also point out that our full-credit program is also, again, a very popular summer program with over thirteen hundred student registrations that took place at Stephson London Secondary and also at McNair Secondary. These students registered in a variety of full-credit ten to twelve courses. And students enrolled either to upgrade their standing in a course or to gain additional course credits. On the other end of the spectrum with our younger students, we have this program called the Inspiration Program. This program is for younger students in grades two to three and four to five. It takes place at their whole schools. And this year, we expanded it to include both Kingswood and Gilmore, the other schools that we've typically ran this program out of with our McNeely, Mitchell, Grauer, Lundell, and Kidd. These students focus on social emotional learning and hands-on activities. And we explored the core curriculum content. Another program that is very popular in our summer program is our app took place at Break House. They are called the Innovation and Exploration Programs. These programs, the are super popular and very hands-on and engaging. For the summer innovation program, students use digital device technology, computers, and applications to support their student learning. While on the other hand, exploration programs offered hands-on activities with a focus on technology and outdoor field experiences. Again, this year, we offer the Fine Arts Program at West Wing. This program was very fun and engaging for our students and parents also enjoyed the performance at the end of the summer program. This student had a variety of inquiry-based and hands-on experiences in all areas of the fine arts, including visual arts, dance, drama, and music. And I had the pleasure of watching the performance at the end, and the students did a wonderful job, and parents were very impressed with their learning. One of the programs we offered just after COVID period was the Connections Program, hearing from students and parents that they're a little bit nervous going into high school. So we tried to create a program that would offer a transition program for these students, again, offering it at, unfortunately, it says three schools here. This year, we added a fourth school, which included Burnett. And students and parents again reported that this was such a wonderful experience for them to help their children and the students, our students going to grade eight, really get used to their new environment and not only engage in some core curricular activities, but also the hidden curricular stuff of just getting used to their new environment, learning how to open up their locks and getting into their lockers and all those other fun things that come along with great experience. Again, this year, I'd like to say that we offered some fee-paying camps. We didn't expand in this area in terms of different types of programs, but our registration numbers increased with the existing programs we offered or classes we offered. Again, we offered Art Around the World, Babington, baking and cooking classes, as well as manufacturing, fat metal fabrication, and CNC machining. You know, for those of you that are unfamiliar with our paid programs, these are elementary students get one free course funded. So a lot of parents in Richmond like to have a full-day experience. So the offer in the paid camps gives them that experience to be there all day and definitely get lots of positive feedback from our programs. And this year, I'd like to report, I mean, obviously, we have other programs. I didn't go into full detail with all of them, but I do want to point out that this year we offered a new program called Summer Inquiry to Leadership Through Experiential Learning. It's a non-credit course that we offered, and we had about seventy students take this course. And it was a wonderful experience for students to engage, engage and secondary students to engage in opportunities and to learn about leadership and gain valuable hands-on experiences. We had students go through some leadership workshops led by Ms. Ying, who is a teacher in the district. And we had the students volunteer in our programs, which was a really interesting payback kind of program. Students really enjoyed it, and we also had them share out some of their reflections. And we love to share those reflections if you ever want to see them. But hopefully next year, one of the plans that I'm going to be looking at over the off-season is see whether or not that's something we can turn into a partial credit, full-credit program. That's all I'd like to share out. Thank you very much for the opportunity to celebrate that.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions? Trustee Beliza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much for the successful summer program. As I go over your report, I, I'm trying to look for something about numeracy literacy and, you know, other, other financial or, you know, business kind of the program where even if the students would not finish high school, they can have some kind of something to lean on or pursue in terms of the financial success. So I don't know if, if it is, that is something that can be offered during summer classes.
Absolutely. And I think that's something that is definitely of interest, I'm sure. We offer some numeracy programs for students and, and an example would be in our full-credit programs. We do offer some of those classes and some of the literacy, financial literacy stuff is embedded in there. However, it might be something in the future to also investigate. So thank you.
Thanks.
And trustee Larsen.
The first word that came to my mind was, wow, the, the, the depth of the programs that you're offering is, is really impressive. There, there's such opportunity there for every, like, for everybody that, you know, you can find something. I, I think it's, um, it's grown so much just in the last couple of years to way back when it was sort of, you know, you went to get your marks up or you went to do this. It was very kind of, well, but this is, this is really something.
Yes, thank you, trustee Larson. And, you know, we're really proud of our programs and, and like Superintendent Yusei had mentioned earlier, is that continuous learning of and, and looking at how we can always further improve our programs and looking at the areas as trustee believes had mentioned, further, you know, look at areas that we can also tap into areas where of interest for students. So we'll continue to do that. But, you know, we have an amazing group of teachers that are willing to give up their summers to work and just really thankful for that as well.
Interesting one.
Madam Chair, my question is that the program, the summer program is that if every positive does applicant, so did they need to just say put on the waiting list or get them disappoint and get the, the programming?
Yeah, no, I totally appreciate the question, trustee Wong. And, you know, to answer that, summer programs in Richmond are very high quality, and I think they're very much in demand. And of course, you know, we'd love to give every single student that opportunity, but it's, it is impossible because although we have some teachers that are willing to work, we don't have the capacity to, you know, really grow and to expand into the same amount of students that we offer during the regular school year. Our registration does have some waiting lists, but I have to say that this year, one of the things, I think, actually, last year, we saw a large waiting list. And so we had staff actually really focus on making sure we fill those students or get those students on waiting lists into the classrooms that they wanted, or if they're not in the classrooms of their first choice, also looked at whether or not there was other options for them. So we had dedicated staff looking into that and really proud to say that we got most of our students on the waiting list, off the waiting list, and into classrooms. Yeah.
Thanks. I have trustee Yang.
Thank you, Chairperson, and thank you to Assistant Superintendent and Mr. Hego for, for this presentation. And I, not a question, but just wanted to thank you for putting together such a vibrant and diverse set of learning opportunities for our students. You know, class, the classes may be out and kids aren't going to the, the, the regular classrooms, but the learning doesn't stop. And I think that is fully exemplified by your report and your presentation tonight. And it brings back good memories because the second course on your list of full-credit program in your report, yeah, brings back good chem twelve memories for sure. So, but in all seriousness, thank you.
No, thank you, trustee Yang. And we're very proud of that continuous learning opportunities in summer and also the equitable access during times when maybe not everyone can access those programs. So thank you very much for pointing that out.
Great, thank you. Trustee Sergeant.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. I really like how your, your PowerPoint was laid out in programming and your report. But, you know, this was called explorations and it really, and it, it really keyed into, for me, the strap plan. Even the colors kind of, I don't know if that was intentional, but, you know, our strap plan is, should be lived throughout the whole year. So I, I'm seeing where continuing yet or summer learning is part of helping us, you know, with our strap plan and all the things we're trying to do with that. So I really applaud that. And the conversation we've had in another time around areas where we want to grow around social, emotional, or belonging. I'd be really interested to see maybe there's some avenues there where we could help us in that work in the summer as well. And I like the, I forget what it's called, where you, you're going into high school, secondary school, and there's a transition there. And I would think that that would help us in that sense of belonging and that sense of safety. So I would encourage you to look for more things like that. And really good job. I really feel you're, you're going, you're taking it to a different place. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Sergeant, and appreciate the feedback. And we will take your considerations. And obviously, I'm in alignment with that. So we'll continue to further investigate how we can connect social emotional learning programs into our summer learning offerings.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a wonderful presentation of all your interesting courses for our young people. It's amazing that they can do, you know, constructive time spent and also the leadership. And it was you talked about with the leadership program, seventy students, and they had to volunteer a minimum of forty hours and provide learning reflection. So what, what kinds of things were they volunteering at?
Really good question. So they would go through a series of couple of workshops where the teacher would facilitate some basic understanding of what leadership looks like and how they could make a difference in whichever setting they're volunteering in. We organize them into different summer learning classes and teachers. We also upon request of teachers and the, and they just, we put them in there and the students did a minimum of forty hours in order to get recognized with a certificate. And one of the most valuable things was actually the reflections that they commented on in terms of their learning. So part of the journey, learning journey was to reflect and do an exit reflection about the leadership connection to their experience. And it was very excellent. It would represent lots of modes of, of celebrating their learning and also lots of deep learning. And so, you know, they got that experience and it was lots of positive feedback. And to the point there where I commented that we may look into a partial credit or full-credit opportunity. It was just sort of an opportunity to investigate a need and try it out and play with it. And hopefully, in the end, we can kind of flesh out something that's going to be even more meaningful for students.
Were they volunteering in areas of their choosing or?
Partial, partial choosing and partial where the need was for our, that was requested by our teachers and their summer learning team and camps. Yeah.
All right. Sounds interesting. Thank you. Yeah, training for later life. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our capital bylaw is next. And we have a report and recommendation from our Secretary Treasurer, Ms. Wang. So if you could present your report.
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. So the capital bylaw and associate reports and documents are listed on pages ninety-six to one oh one of the public meeting package. On September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the ministry issued a amendment to their original response, capital response letter to the board. And it its support for the additional minor capital projects, food infrastructure program to align with the work under being currently undertaken in implementing the Feeding Futures Food Program. So this is an additional allocation of ninety-four thousand dollars to fund kitchen upgrades and additional works, including electrical, mechanical work required for those upgrades. Therefore, staff recommend the board approve the capital bylaw by way of three ratings in today's board meeting. And approval of the bylaw will allow us to meet the ministry's submission deadline of September thirtieth. So that's my report. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you. Okay. As you know, the capital bylaw is a bit of a process, requires three readings. So we have the staff recommendation that capital project bylaw number twenty-three, twenty-four dash CPSD thirty-eight oh two be approved by way of three readings and adopted. So I'm just looking, do we have unanimous agreement that do three readings tonight? Thank you. Now I'll read the first reading of the bylaw in full. Oh, by law, by the Board of Education, uh, School District Number Thirty-Eight, Richmond, Heron After called the board to adopt a capital plan of the board pursuant to sections one forty-three two and one forty-four one of the school act. Whereas in accordance with provisions of the school act, the Minister of Education here and after called the minister has approved the capital plan of the board. Now, therefore, the board agrees to the following. To authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute project agreements related to the expenditures contemplated by the capital plan. Complete each project substantially as directed by the minister. And C is to observe and comply with any order, regulation, or policy of the minister as may be applicable to the board or project. Projects and D is maintain proper books of account and other information and documents with respect to the affairs of the project as may be prescribed by the minister. So now, therefore, the board enacts as follows. The capital bylaw of the board for twenty-three, twenty-four capital plan approved by the minister to include the supported project supplied in the letter addressed to Secretary Treasurer and Superintendent dated the ninth of March, two thousand and twenty-three. supplied in the letter addressed to Secretary Treasurer and Superintendent dated the ninth of March twenty twenty-three is hereby adopted. And this bylaw may be cited as School District Number Thirty-Eight Capital Bylaw Twenty-three, Twenty-four dash C P S D thirty-eight dash O two. So can I have a mover and a seconder? So trustee Belisa and trustee Larson. For the first reading, so I'll call the question. All in favor? No one opposed? Trustees um have carried the first reading. Now I'll read the second reading of the bylaw in summary, that the Board of Education Richmond approved capital bylaw number twenty-three eight dash O two through bylaw, through the bylaw. The board agrees to authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute the project agreement and commence and proceed the approved projects and comply with all applicable laws. Can I have a mover and a seconder for the second reading? Trustee Sergeant and trustee Wong. And are there any questions or discussions? Do you have a question, uh trustee Yang?
Thank you, Chairperson. Just a quick question. Um when when will we expect this project to be completed?
Of the project is it's currently underway. Um we should be able to complete all the projects before the end of the year.
And we're talking, we're for this one, we're talking about Boyd McNair as well as four thousand dollars.
That's right. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we 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 must complete all the projects before March thirty-three, thirty-first, which is the government's fiscal year end.
All right, so I'm gonna call the question. All all those in favor? None opposed? The second reading is carried, and I'll read the third and final reading of the bylaw in summary. That the Board of Education Richmond approved capital bylaw number twenty-three, twenty-four dash C P S D thirty-eight dash O two. Through the bylaw, the board agrees to authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute the project agreement and commence and proceed the approved projects and comply with all applicable laws, regulations, and ministry policies. And I'm looking for a mover and a seconder for the third reading. Trustee Yang and one more, trustee Larson, thank you. Uh are there any questions or discussion? I don't see any, so I'll call the question. All in favor? None opposed? Uh so the third and final reading is carried. So capital bylaw. Twenty-three, twenty- preparing with us on that. And approval of additional minor capital programs, the food infrastructure program, and there's
Uh thank you, Chairperson. So in the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three public board meeting, the board approved the twenty-four, twenty-five, five-year capital plan, uh which was submitted to the ministry for uh so the capital plan includes three components, major capital program, minor capital, and building envelope programs. Within the minor capital program, there is a subcategory for newly, for the newly introduced, the food infrastructure program to support infrastructure needs to implement the feeding futures program. This fall, the ministry provided the opportunity for school districts across the province to um consider submitting updated information uh for this program, given this is a new process, this is a new pro- uh new program. So in our case, it was determined that the kitchen upgrades uh will be required to implement the feeding futures program across our district. So with that, a uh that's an estimated cost of um uh two hundred ten thousand dollars across different schools in the district. Uh so therefore, staff recommend that the board approve the additional minor capital projects for uh food infrastructure program as presented in the report, and uh staff will then ensure the uh district meets the timeline of the ministry's cap-
Someone, you're moving, uh can you read it? Sure, that the Board of Education of School District Thirty-Eight Richmond approved the inclusion of an additional minor capital programs, food infrastructure program in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, five-year capital plan. And uh looking for a seconder, is it trustee Wong? Are there any questions? Uh trustee Yang.
Thank you, Chairperson. Uh just two questions for for uh this motion. Uh so what we had just passed uh with the by, with the capital bylaw, ninety-four thousand dollars for Boyd McNair and Palmer. We're seeing those schools again and uh as part of this uh package, so.
Yeah, for different um the scope of work is different. So this one is for the next fiscal plan, which is the twenty-four, twenty-five uh capital plan. And the scope of this work is mainly for appliances, update for aging appliances, and also expanding the current appliances to accommodate, uh you know, a wider scope of the implementation of the feeding futures program.
So same site, but just different.
Different, different work. Different work, yeah.
Okay, uh and then the second question, um for elementary schools, uh we have seven on the list. Uh and I'm just wondering how we determine which elementary schools to uh receive upgrades.
Yeah, so thank you for the question. The um the what happened was our planning department, uh our staff has uh gone through all our schools in the district and they um surveyed the the food infrastructure facilities conditions and determined, for for instance, some of the um elementary schools, you know, older elementary schools, they have kitchen in the just beside the gym, right? They're too small, and they're not able to accommodate larger crowd of students. So based on those type of assessment, uh facility condition, aging of the facilities and the size of the facilities, they determined, you know, these are the schools that are going to be put on the priority list.
And I can attest, having uh our Rotary Club has done the breakfast program at Gilmore, and uh and it's always a, we make pancakes, it's it's always um an exercise in futility, keep the power going and and the kitchen is small and so yes, I can see why this needs to be done. We're thankful. Okay, so I will call the question then. All those in favor? And uh any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Thank you.
Um I'm wondering if we could have a report on the food infrastructure, what is it called? Well, the food program, just in general, because my understanding is now we've gotten some money for staff. Um just how is this all working and is everything being covered and and what would this look like in? Like, are we funding some of this and what does it look like? Is it just adding to our breakfast programs or now we're having lunch or? All of it is lovely, but you know, what's what's it really like on the ground? And it doesn't have to come tonight, but I'd be really interested. I have heard that there's a staff person that's been hired. Um you know, what would that person's role be and anyways, more information, thank you.
And perhaps maybe even that could go to education committee.
As a board, I would like to hear.
Yeah. We could do it there and uh as well as an update, but if it goes to education committee, it could be even more in depth, so probably both, because I think we're all very interested in it. Thank you for this suggestion, and our staff can take note of that. Right, this is another opportunity for questions from the public and not sure if there's any that will come in online. Welcome again. Our K president, Ms. Wong.
Uh thank you. Uh thank you for the opportunity to ask questions, and uh my actual questions uh are about the financial statement, um the discussion and analysis, of course, there's uh the pages of the audited uh financial statements as well. What I will say is that ahead of the meeting, I did ask a number of questions um and really appreciated the Secretary Treasurer's uh time to go through some of those questions in advance. So what I want to ask the board, and maybe it's timely, given that there is a provincial meeting that is upcoming, that's advocacy for funding, is if anyone's anticipating those funding model restarting, because they they were paused in the pandemic, um and the reason why I bring that to your attention is September's always the special purpose funds, specifically the classroom enhancement fund, which is on page one hundred and seventy-four. Um that is uh basically forty-three million dollars, and I want to celebrate that always. That was hard won um by uh teachers to get that language back. This is the collective agreement that finally has it back, the actual pages. There are fifteen in total, and you think those fifteen basically are equivalent to forty-four million dollars. Let us never forget that, and when you um ever have those conversations about changing the funding model, my advice is please don't see the classroom enhancement fund rolled into base. Um I think we would lose. Um we always lose when it goes into base, so that is why I asked the question if any of those um discussions are happening, if anybody's hearing that on the ground. And if you hear it um when you go off and do advocacy, um just stay tuned, because we just don't want to see um that loss. It's a huge number of teachers, um support staff um that are here. So that was my first uh question. I I do have another one.
And and then when I go for the advocacy day, you know, I'll take note of what I hear and uh also um reiterate that, you know, we don't want to see that classroom enhancement fund absorbed into the funding model.
Thank you. The the other one um is uh probably aligns with that is I know there'll be lots of talk about uh funding, but also about recruitment and keeping that recruitment feature. Um and so just asking, you know, are there updates on that from uh trustees about those conversations about recruitment and how much happened perhaps at your summer conference? When you take a look at um page one hundred and seventy-one and you look at um the teacher actual and budgeted versus the uh substitute or, in our case, teachers teaching on call, the actual and budget, it really and that just tells you that we, it was how difficult it was to fill classroom positions, and I know you heard about it. I know parents contacted you when and I I know that we're all committed, um but we really do need to see some action um from from the government um on this issue, um because we do, we need staff i- in buildings um each day. Um so just asking if there's any update from um some of your meetings in relationship to that piece.
Don't see anybody jumping up with their hand, but um I certainly will keep my ears open. Uh you know, we're just getting started. We did have a metro meeting for B C School Trustees Association last week. But that was more of a B C P C presentation, and there was discussion around the table, and yes, you know, all all of us are struggling with recruitment retention. That was, you know, kind of the common theme, so among boards. Um and I'm sure we'll hear that across the province, so we'll keep, well, we will all keep our ears open and um and be ready to advocate it in opportunities, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Those were great questions and um beginning to get nervous about those advocacy days. A lot, um but I'm hoping that it's going to be a good opportunity for trustees. Uh standing committee reports and uh audit committee Chairperson, uh trustee Yang. You have a bit of a job to do.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Chairperson. Uh I'm pleased to uh present the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three audit audited financial statements, and if I can just pull up the motion here to put it on. So recommendation is that the Board of Education Richmond approved the audited financial statements for the fiscal year ended June thirty of twenty twenty-three as presented, and further that the Chair of the Board, the Superintendent of Schools, and the Secretary Treasurer to be authorized to sign the audited financial statements, and I will so move so we can
So we're looking for a seconder. Uh trustee Belisa.
Purposes of discussion, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay, is there any discussion? Do you want to add any comments?
Sure, certainly. Um so uh as you can see, the audited financial statements and the financial statement discussion and analysis are attached in the uh board package. Um it is the auditor's opinion that the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three audited financial statements are prepared in accordance to the legislation. Uh the auditor has no significant, no significant findings or material risk of error to report. Um and so that's uh good news, uh certainly, and uh in in terms of the second document, um you know, it includes some um uh analysis and projections on the state of our our budgets, and uh in particular, uh highlight is that uh seven hundred seventy thousand dollars uh in operating fund on restricted surplus uh in the last fiscal year. Um as well as some uh analysis on long-term outlook. The fact that we need to still monitor and dress trends and factors such as inflation, enrollment growth, uh space constraints in our city center schools, um staffing shortages, uh and so job well done by our Assistant Secretary Treasurer. Uh I want to commend her for her work. And uh at large as well to our finance staff for uh as well as our auditors from K P M G for their work uh in preparing this professional uh audit, and you know, it's, I think uh we we think that this might not be the most exciting part of the job, but uh in reality, um this is a role, a very essential role in ensuring that we provide transparency and accountability uh to taxpayers and the general public and our school community. And with that, close and forward to getting this done. Thanks.
And um yeah, just kudos to our financial staff. I think they've done an excellent job and once again, a clean audit. With uh next to no notes to the statements, and um I think it's fantastic. Uh and they do a lot of work over the summer, lot of work, so we appreciate them greatly. Um and I'm sure our Secretary Treasurer appreciates uh the staff as well, so kudos to all of them and to, thank you. So uh if there's, aren't any more comments or questions or um do you have something to ask trustee Belisa?
Uh yes, sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, and uh first of all, I'd like to thank the Office of the Secretary Treasurer for providing us the long-term outlook. It's very helpful in terms of uh knowing the 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 future of this district and the funding model. We have the, you have mentioned that the impact of the phase two implementation of the funding model is unknown. Anything you can add to that in insofar as the future of this funding model, its impact to the district? And uh the enrollment growth in the school facility, the city center. Uh, we know that we need two twenty-five uh, classes, two s- schools. Uh, but we do know how much would it entail insofar as the budget is concerned. And uh, probably if you can advise the board to act to, uh, we're gonna be seek- seeking. The inflation enterprise risk management in terms of managing the, the assets of the district. Uh, I don't know if you can expound uh, those things or those stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Uh, thank you, uh, trustee Belisa for your questions. Those are all wonderful questions, insightful questions. Uh, first one for the funding model, uh, the, the discussion about the potential factors in the long-term law outlook is based on the discussion that's been being uh, provided by the Ministry of Education. So I, at this stage, I would say um, perhaps um, i- it, it is really unknown in terms of where the ministry wanted to go to take, to take to the, to the, to the phase two of the funding model um, recommendation review. Um, I think, uh, stay tuned to, to see where the ministry would like to take that too. Um, and I do agree with uh, Ms. Bev- Beverstock in terms of the um, impact of staff. Um, I, I, I concur, you know, we don't want to see as a board, we don't really want to see staff um, being dramatic or drastically changed from the current funding model, because the impact could be significant on our ability to provide um, to, to retain our staff and provide the services to our classrooms. So that's number one. Number two, uh, in terms of the city center, yes. Uh, if you recall trustees on our five-year capital plan or our long-range facilities plan, uh, the top of the priorities in our city center uh, space pressure is the expansion, the expansion programs. So um, it, staff have been engaging with ministry staff, capital management staff to look at how to accelerate the um, ex- school expansion programs. So we're really hopeful that we'll provide short-term relief on the space pressure i- in our city center schools. But long-term, uh, we still have a long-term projection which is going up in our city center areas. So in the long-term, we do need a two new school and it's also recorded in our long-term uh, long-range facilities plan. So in terms of the cost of the expansion programs, it's likely to cost about ten million dollars per school for the expansion pro- so for the four city center elementary schools, the total cost at this stage, depending on what kind of structure, if we're talking about modular uh, classroom expansions, approximately it will cost about ten million dollars per school. So we're looking at about forty million dollars for the uh, prefabricated modular classroom additions for the, for city center schools. And uh, for the um, a new school, a new school in our long-range facilities plan, the estimate cost currently without land, just the construction of a new school is about sixty million dollars. Of course, uh, you know, the more you delay on the construction, the more cost you're going to look at because of inflation. And to answer your third question on the inflation, yes, through the board's long-term strategic fiscal planning, we do every year, we do build in, um, for example, this year for twenty-three, twenty-four uh, budget, board, board's budget, district budget, we did build in about six percent increase in our inflationary, inflationary cost pressure on supplies and services uh, in, 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 for our schools and also different departments. Yeah, so hopefully that answers your question.
We need twenty-three classrooms. And in the absence of short-term funding for short-term needs, we need to have some options for this. So probably one of the options is twenty-three portables. And who paid for the portables is coming from the district. Am I correct? So, how, how, in terms of budget options of the board?
Terms of portables for September twenty-twenty-three, we did redeploy the existing portables from different schools and moved them into the city center schools. So at this point, the cost pressure for this year uh, so far is just a moving cost, you know, moving cost uh, is relatively smaller compared to a new portable procurement. Um, however, if you recall in our last amended budget, we did set aside about one point eight million dollars in our capital reserves to address potential or future portable needs. If we need to buy for, so one point eight million dollars, that's equivalent to about five new portable classrooms. So we are prepared. If we don't get school expansion, then yes, we're prepared to, to, to purchase the portables. Um, long-term, we are hopeful that we will be able to get some school uh, modular classroom expansions in your, in our city center schools. And those capital uh, projects will be paid or will be provided by the ministry.
Hope we can have a good news from the province.
Yeah, we're very hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you, Madame Chair.
That was part of the um, the advocacy work that we did in June and some of the recommendations that came out of the select standing committee to um, you know, fast-track some of the funding for those modular um, portables. So, thank you. Uh, I guess we have to call the question. Are we ready? So if we're ready, we'll call the question. All those in favor and none opposed, so the motion is carried. And congratulations, a network done once again.
Chairperson, uh, just to, just to wrap up, uh, uh, audit committee, uh, a meeting was held on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January ninth, twenty-twenty.
Okay, and education committee chairperson.
Was held on June the fourteenth or and a meeting was held on Wednesday, September twentieth. It was fantastic. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October eighteenth at six P M.
And the public is invited to attend. They have been very good meetings indeed. Uh, the chairperson is away today, so I will report that um, minutes of the meeting held on June seventh are attached for information and a meeting was held on Wednesday, September sixth for Wednesday, October fourth at four thirty. And finance and legal trustee sergeant, you have a little bit of work to do too.
Yeah, thank you very much. The Board of Education School District Thirty-Eight Richmond is paying for expenses incurred by the trustees of the in the discharge of their duties. Be it resolved that in accordance with the School Act, the Board of Education of School District Thirty-Eight Richmond approved trustees' expenses paid during the three-month period ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I'm looking for a second. Trustee Wong. Any discussion?
Uh, just a little more information. You'll see um, in, in the package that most of those expenses were uh, the AGM.
No more discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? No one is opposed. The motion is carried.
Thank you. And there are minutes of the meeting held May seventeenth attached for info. And our next meeting will be held Wednesday, October eighteenth at ten A M.
And policy committee is myself, uh, minutes of meeting held May and the next meet, meeting is scheduled for Monday, October sixteenth at eleven A M. And board committee and representative reports council board liaison. Meeting was held on Wednesday, September thirteenth. Uh, where we once again uh, introduced our superintendent to uh, counselors and um, lots of discussion between uh, council and trustees uh, regarding, you know, city center and other items. We received the uh, city's youth strategy report. Very interesting. Well, trustees received that. And uh, that's, that's it. B C S T A. I think I mentioned that there was metro meeting that I attended as well as trustee sergeant. Presentation from our uh, from uh, B C P C. That's our uh, bargaining agent for the board and there was lots of discussion about fees and um, trustees had lots of questions. It was, was really interesting presentation. Um, and B C P C, I don't, is there anything wanted to say about B C P C? I don't have anything currently, other than that presentation was very interesting. Uh, there's no correspondence for action. And so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn trustee Wong and trustee Yang. All those in favor? None opposed, of course, and thank you all for brings to a close our first meeting of the school year. Thank you. Thank you to the people.